We're going to call this regular council meeting to order Monday, June 2nd, 2025, at 5:01 PM. And we request you turn your cellphones down or off, and roll call, please.
Mr. Edelman, Mr. Hedinson?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Prentice?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Please stand for the President's Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, and Lord, we just seek your wisdom tonight as the council discusses the future of the city and many of the policies and procedures that will need to be done in the future. So, we just thank you for your guidance tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. All right, we're going to have a couple changes on approval of the agenda. One change will be number two in correspondence, a presentation from Caroline Quizum with Fairgram regarding the sewer study. She is sick, and she was one who was the main, one of the main ones there, so we're going to lay that over. And we're going to lay over unfinished business, number one, discuss approved ordinance 2848 and amending chapter 18 business by adding article seven, or 12, rather, residential rental property regulation, because Ryan was one of the instrumental people in there, and he's not here today, so we're laying that over. We're going to lay over number D and new business, and that will be discuss approved ordinance 2852, amend in chapter 10, animals, section two, dogs and cats, because we need everybody here for that. And item E will change that, it will add on the bottom end of that where it says expansion of driveway entrance from 851 Donner Drive to a Fairgram Design Engineering and Proposal Not to Exceed $46,550. Okay, somebody want to give me a-
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as modified.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's all approved. So, now we'll go on to public comment. Anybody want to raise their hand, stand up, talk a little bit? Okay, if not, we're going to move on then. Thank you. Approval of the minutes for regular council meeting held May 19th, 2025, motion?
Move.
All in favor? Aye. Four to zero. Okay, attorney's report.
None.
Finance?
Oh, yeah, I better pay some bills, huh?
Yeah. We have the approval of claims from May 17th through the 30th in the amount of $403,853.12.
Get a motion?
So, move.
Tracy, please.
Mr. Edelman, Mr. Hedinson?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes.
Yes, skipped right over that, Don. Almost gave you a heart attack there.
Not me, but some other people.
Okay, now we'll go to the attorney's report.
No.
No report. Okay, now we're going to our department heads' report, Sonya, please.
Yeah, I just have one comment for the board tonight, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to call out that we did hold our Public Works event during the last cycle year. It wasn't very good weather, and we didn't have a huge turnout, but thank you very much for the commissioners and Mayor who stopped out and at least supported our guys. I think they were happy to give their families tours and a couple of close friends, but the weather definitely could have caused us to cancel, but we stuck it out. And then also, while we're on a public works note, I just want to say that for the first time in at least four years, both departments are fully staffed. So, we have a really good team right now, really excited for the full-time people we've added in the last cycle, Aaron Miller to the wastewater, and for the first time in a real long time, we have four rock solid part-time people lined up for the parks this summer. So, it doesn't happen very often, but we are fully staffed, and these guys are ready to rock, but that is the only comment that I have to say.
That's good news, but in my office, we would say you just jinxed it, you can't say that out loud.
I know, but I did not.
You're not allowed to say that.
Also, on a hiring front, we got the other deputy clerk position posted. We have not gone through those candidates thoroughly, but there's an Indeed ad running right now, and we're starting to get a lot of candidates in that pool. So, Tracy and I are reviewing those this week and starting to set up some interviews.
All right.
It's about the only hiring update for you, Mayor, thank you.
Who's got the-
Jeff has it.
My report, my sewer plant report tonight. I'm not going to go through a lot of this, I am not going to be able to be at the meeting next Monday, or two weeks from Monday, tonight. So, I wanted to cover a couple of things, one being the sewer rate study, it was done, it was very thorough. We do need to replace the lift station one, it hasn't had anything done in a very, very long time. I think the last time it was upgraded at all was in the eighties, late eighties, with some pumps and that. The forced main under the river is a four inch, which is kind of at its peak use now, but that was put in the sixties. We can't maintain it, one manhole's for maintaining that, is on the island, that is full of mud, and there's no way to access it with, to dig out all that mud down with the river water there, too. I'm sure it just fills up with water. The rate study had included other items, but I think the big one that we need to keep in mind in two weeks is that we need to do that lift station one project. It's very expensive, and it's gotten a lot more expensive since we started exploring it. It's only going to get more expensive, and that's our oldest lift station. The upside to that is, we're going to do away with not just one old lift station, but two lift stations. We'll get rid of two oldest functioning lift stations, have a brand-new one, which means less electricity because you have more gravity flow on it. Yes, I'll keep going back to it, it's very expensive. I will point out, too, we have been doing rate increases, but those are based off of what we need for the sewer plant to go over time. That doesn't even take into account from 2021, our increases in expenses. Just buying reagents to do our tests and that have gone up 40% since that time. It couldn't have been accounted for ahead of time, and we haven't adjusted our rate structure since then. So, I think we're doing a really good job with the money we have available to keep an operating budget as best we can, but we can't take a chance anymore with lift station one moving forward. We just have to bite that bullet. And I feel real bad for the community, I know it's going to be expensive, hardship for a lot of people, but we really don't have an option. We've been exploring actually funding and that, it just doesn't seem to be out there, unlike with water and some of the other items throughout the state. Sewer is a lot of times not, not thought of. There's a couple, but we've applied for them, but we haven't been granted anything. So, on the rate study, Carolyn has all the details. I know we're expensive, we aren't the highest rated sewer rates in Northern Illinois, which we were when we first started raising them, but everybody's caught up to us because they run into the same problems. It is going to put us back up there again, but I don't know what the other option is, we discharge illegally to the river and we get fined, and we pay for pumping all the time, and that's not a good option either. We explored a lot of different ways, but I really think getting rid of two of our oldest lift stations to get this done is a big deal as well. We're going to give us some stability on the west side and some room to grow if anything does take off on the west side. Moving towards the meters, the other item I wanted to talk about, we had some discussion last meeting about it. I kept back a few meters so that we could, if so, if you desired to do a deduct meter that we could rent out or loan out for a deduct, where they'd have it for only a couple of days, and they'd have to return it back, there'd be a deposit for it. There's a lot of things we could do, but really, you know, we all have our luxuries that we take part of every day of our lives, and sometimes we have to make decisions on what luxuries are most important to us, because we all spend money on things that maybe somebody else might view as foolishness. I'm not saying this pool's foolish, it's all in the eye of what people view as their desire for their lifestyle, but there's a cost that goes with it. And the cost in water for a few thousand gallons to top off, because of brand-new pool, we do deduct the total amount of the water for a brand-new pool with the permit, and I don't believe there's a permit fee for it. We, you know, they're getting a chance to fill the pool the first time with the deduct, and it's a few thousand gallons. So, you know, you can look at what your bill is, it could be as little as $25 to top off your pool to 50. Sometimes you have too much water throughout the summer in your pool, and sometimes it evaporates a lot, and you have not enough and have to add some more. But, and not a lot of people do it, but I have seen it, including a house I purchased where the backwash was plumbed into a floor drain. So, that was going right back into sewer media. I've seen where people, not in South Beloit, but in the past, would run a hose for their backwash over to a storm drain or into a sewer drain, sewer manhole even, so that they didn't have that water sitting with those chemicals in their grass or in their lawn. So, those things do happen, I'm not saying everybody doesn't, but it does happen, and we still get water. Our billing is somewhere around 1.2 to 1.4 million gallons a day. I want to remind everybody, the lowest we ever have is 1.6, usually around 2 million gallons a day. That water comes from a lot of places. We probably still have a lot of leaks in our mains as well, but we spent $2 million in fixing leaks many years back, 10 years back about, and we fixed the worst areas, and we still haven't seen huge significance in decrease of those areas. We'll continue to look into that, but I think there's some locations where things aren't either metered right or aren't metered at all that we're not billing for, too. And it's a shame that the people, the good people that are paying their bill and doing the right things end up paying for other things, but we can do look at something more with meters. Ryan is working on some other options. I did also provide a while back, it gets a long while, a couple of years ago, what would look like if we went and did our own meter program, where we installed our own meters, and we read them, just like if we had a water system, but we don't. I think the startup for the first 500 was like 300,000 or so. Once you got the program going, once you had the software and all the equipment that goes with it, the cost of meters get far less. And we could look at that again, too, but we're asking residents to then pay for a meter horn and a meter installation. The meter horn would allow us to put our meter in along with American Water's meter in that same slot that American Water has their meter sitting right now. It can work, some redundancy, but it could bring us to way more accuracy for South Beloit.
Is there a, when you were talking about like lift station number one, for example, you were saying, you know, there's not really grants or anything, it's just a cost that unfortunately we're going to have to go through. Have you ever seen if there are grants for like those sewer meters? Is that considered anything differently in the sewer world?
The way we're going to use them, probably not, I haven't looked at it. That's something we could look at, but I kind of wouldn't be surprised if they supported it, but there are meter green programs.
Because most municipalities, the sewers want all the water, and unfortunately, we don't-
If we had both, things would be a lot easier for all of us. It's unfortunate that we don't, but-
Would be capable of a system where if somebody had a swimming pool, they could put a meter in on their sewer?
So, we could put-
Rather than doing everybody?
What I would think is we'd have maybe 10, five or 10 meters that were set up, just like we used to have for irrigation meters, that they could come in, they'd pay a deposit for, they'd go out with a reading, they'd come back with a reading, they would be allowed to do it once or twice a year, or whatever it might be, and that would be deducted off wherever they run through the hose to fill the swimming pool. I wouldn't recommend doing it for gardens and things like that, it gets way more complicated. That being said, I do know there's people in town that use rain barrels and are very successful with that, with their raised gardens and things like that. Usually, rainwater is a lot better than chlorinated water anyhow, but just the same, they do work. You know, so as far as filling a swimming pool or something like that, we could do something. I'm not saying I'm real supportive of it, but it can be done. And it wouldn't be that taxing on the whole system, but it will make more paperwork for the girls upstairs, too. And, you know, we would have to charge, even if we're doing it so they get a deduct, look, there's still a cost in handling the meter and doing the paperwork and that. There still needs to be a charge, a service charge, whoever that is, and you've got to figure out what that cost is to you, or you decide to just look past that and move on.
I asked Jeff to mention this because we promised we'd put it on a future agenda. I know Ryan is trying to gather some nuggets and ideas from the past, we provided him some of the historical stuff, but because Jeff's going to be out for a little while with surgery-
Yeah.
-I asked him to just at least provide some comments to keep it-
I want him to keep it fresh, because I know I won't be here for the next meeting, I might not be here for a couple of meetings, I don't know how that's going to, how quickly recovery will be.
I'm not here at the next meeting.
So, just the same, I wanted everybody to hear my thoughts and share them, it was my opportunity with my report. If you have questions about what I wrote down here, that's the general stuff we've been doing. Sonya's done something really good in weekly highlights that I've been doing, works really good for me making my report every quarter, and, you know, so I use that to create my report, but I felt strongly at sharing my thoughts with you as I will be here for a couple of meetings, so.
Lift station number one, is that the one that we're talking about with the lady motion?
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure that's the same one?
Yeah.
I thought it wasn't, I was second.
We will move it, it's down there across from Riverview School down in the low area. It will get moved over across the road from lift station two at the trailer park, it's right out front there. That one will also be abandoned. Part of the cost is we're going to excavate a bunch of ground to create gravity sewer, so we can get rid of this electric bill all the time, continuing costs, continuing upgrades for an extra lift station. We'll go from nine lift stations, which we currently have, down to eight, with one being very new. All of them are, the newest one, I believe, is 17 or 18 years old. So, you know, we haven't done anything with lift stations in a very long time, and outside of upgrading one cabinet, that's where we're at.
What do you think, Brian?
What's that?
About the, about these meters and stuff.
I don't know, I'm going to think about it more.
All right. Anybody else? Do you got any more on that?
No, no, I just wanted to share today. I'm sorry, it's not my normal report, it was my opportunity, it's right on the cusp of me being gone. I know that both those items are really hot topics right now, and wanted to make sure I was able to share with each and every one of you.
Yeah. All right. Okay, moving on then, we'll go to correspondence, a presentation from Kevin Kavanaugh regarding the police pension and fire pension accrual studies. Kevin, please.
All right, I guess I'm setting a dangerous precedent here, taking that for you.
That's the first time.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, you're the first one ever used it.
All right, it's nice and fresh, it's good. So, I'm Kevin Kavanaugh from Lauterbach and Ammon here today. I won't take up your whole unique, just want to talk a little bit about the Fire and Police Pension Funds, with a commission this year to do an actuarial study. Basically, what that means is we're trying to predict the future of what benefit payments are going to be paid out of these pension funds. It all wraps up into some of the results that you see here in front, in the presentation that I passed around. So, some of the initial assumptions and funding policy we used to develop these numbers, just through discussion with Don, to give you guys some numbers today. I just wanted to mention, nothing's locked in stone, things are still subject to change if the city council has strong feelings one way or another, it's a change if these assumptions or funding policy items is still. So, that being said, if you turn to that first page of my presentation, I'll reference the page numbers in the bottom left corner, so it'll say number two there. You'll see this is the key result of our evaluation. So, we calculate every year, and let me play back up a step and say, at the state level, the consolidated fire and police pension funds are going to produce an actuarial valuation specific to your fire and police pension funds every single year. So, those bodies are called IFPIF on the fire side, the Illinois Firefighters Pension Investment Fund, and on the police side, IPOPIF. So, you might hear me use those terms a couple of times, that's Illinois Police Officers' Pension Investment Fund. They're going to produce every year what's considered to be a statutory minimum funding requirement. So, that means that is the minimum legal obligation that the city of South Beloit is required to contribute to the fire and police pension funds on an annual basis. What we're doing here as Lauterbach and Ammon, as the private actuary, is we're going a step further to give you guys a recommended contribution. So, it's basically over and above what that statutory minimum funding requirement is. This is going to be something that's going to basically set you guys up for more success in the future. So, it's a more sound actuarial, funding principles, assumptions, all those different elements, and I'll highlight that as I go through the presentation here this evening. Also happy to answer any questions, feel free to interrupt me if anyone has any questions on it. Bottom line, first number on the page here is going to be the recommended contribution for fire and police. So, we developed this year a recommended contribution for fire, so this would be for this upcoming tax year, calendar 2026, $22,745. You'll notice that's a very significant year over your increase. Last year, IFPIF statutory minimum was about $9,158, so I'll explain why in a minute. On the police pension fund, we're coming in this year with $262,024 recommended contribution. That gives a combined contribution to fire and police of about $284,000, again, for this upcoming tax year. So, when we look at our evaluation that we do, it's a very customized approach, we look at your unique funds. In particular, your fire pension fund is very unique in the sense that you don't have active members, and the pension fund's over 100% funded. Pretty rare to see that in the state of Illinois, I'll say, for sure, especially the over 100% funded. So, when we develop this $22,745, what that represents, you'll see me highlighting it in a minute, is purely the administrative expenses incurred by the fire pension fund last year. So, last year, I think administrative expenses were a little bit higher than average, couple legal matters kind of going around last year, so I don't expect that you'll always be at that $22,700 number, but basically what that is, is last year's administrative expenses with a year of interest. So, essentially, it's just reimbursing the fire pension fund for the costs that were incurred in the prior year. That's 100% of the cost on the fireside. The police pension, a little bit more complicated, we'll get into that. Going down a few lines there, you'll see the funded percent for the both funds. Fire pension fund, we evaluate to be sitting this year about 100.48% funded, so just over that 100% funding mark. Congratulations to the city of South Beloit, you're in a very small minority of Illinois municipalities with a 100% funded pension fund, so that's really good. On the police side, the fund's sitting about 81.81%, also a pretty healthy number. The average in the state of Illinois for fire and police pension funds as of the end of 2022 is about 64% funded. So, if you guys have a 100% funded fund, and almost 82% funded pension fund, you're pretty well ahead of the state average here in Illinois. Turning to that next page there, that's going to really break down all the different factors that led to the change in contribution this year. So, I'm not going to drill too hard into any individual item here, but you can see some of the bigger ticket items. So, looking at the fire column, for example, the first, you'll see the actuarial experience, that's any demographic changes during the year, as well as any changes compared to the prior actuary to us, meaning that was foster and foster from the consolidated fire board to now Lauterbach and Ammon. The next one is assumption changes, so that's pretty significant as well, updated a lot of actuarial assumptions. So, at Lauterbach and Ammon, we study, we work with over 300 fire and police pension funds in the state of Illinois. We compile that data to give our best estimate of what we expect to see in the future in terms of termination, disability, retirement, mortality, pay increases, all these different factors impact the long-term cost of the pension fund. So, we put together basically our best set of assumptions for your pension fund. One key one to note would be the expected rate of investment. We're using, in the initial conversation with Don, we're using a 6.75% expected rate of return. That compares a little bit more conservatively to what the consolidated pension boards will use on the fireside, they would use 7.125%, so a more aggressive expectation of investment returns. And then, on the police side, 6.8%. So, and again, we're using the 6.75, so a little more conservative on the whole. Funding policy changes, we'll drill into that in a minute. Asset return is greater than expected this year, it actually drove a little bit of an increase because returns on a five-year average are slightly less than the expected 6.75% that we saw, but then we're expecting to see on a going-forward basis. And then finally, contribution is greater than expected, so the city put in significant additional dollar amounts to the fire pension fund last year, about $192,000 contributed during the year. And then on the police side, the contribution was pretty much almost exactly in line with that statutory minimum requirement, because about 110% of that amount. So, all those factors together, again, not drilling too long, I don't want to talk for two hours to you guys about this tonight, but you can see on the fireside, total increase $13,600, on the police side, total increase $37,500 for this year. And hopefully, now that you've got Lauterbach and Ammon involved doing the actuarial reporting, should kind of help to keep these costs more stable in the future, you don't have this many changes in next year's valuation, for example. One thing I'll just note, by the way, and it's that footnote at the bottom of there, page three, it's a good example of what the difference between IFPIF would do versus what we're doing with Lauterbach and Ammon. So, IFPIF has a really a one-size-fits-all approach, so when they produce a statutory minimum funding requirement, they look at JOLIA the same way as they do South Beloit. And the reality is that you're completely different entities, right, and you should be viewed in a different manner. So, when IFPIF does their valuation, what they do for determining that contribution, there's really three components to the contribution. First piece is called normal cost, it's the cost of benefit accrual for active members. So, on the fire pension fund, you don't have any, nobody's accruing benefits today, zero dollar normal cost. The second piece of the contribution is a payment towards unfunded liability, the fund's 100% funded, no unfunded liability, zero dollars. The third piece is a load factor for administrative expenses. This is where the IFPIF approach doesn't make a lot of sense. What they do is they assume administrative expenses will be 2% of the normal cost. Well, for your fire fund, the normal cost is zero, so they're assuming your administrative expenses will be zero dollars for fire. The reality is, you're going to incur administrative expenses, you're hiring Lauterbach and Ammon, having attorneys, having, you know, anything that the pension board, professional training that the board needs to do. All these different factors lead to costs, so that's why we went with this approach of including the explicit administrative expenses, so that that way, what's happening is that basically, one year in arrears, the fire pension fund is being reimbursed for any expenses that were incurred during that year, as opposed to the 2%, just doesn't make any sense for fire. For police, it kind of makes a little bit more sense, so we didn't add an explicit administrative expense, a little bit to that. On page four, it really details now what I was just saying. So, you can see for fire, typically, there's those three components of cost, normal cost, administrative expense, paying off unfunded liability. Again, for fire, you're going to see the only cost is administrative expense because the rest are zero. On the police side, exactly the opposite, no explicit administrative expenses, we do have a normal cost, that's the cost of members accruing benefits, you have active police officers accruing benefits, that's this year's cost of benefit accruals of $122,330. Then there's the payment towards unfunded liability, you've got about $1.5 million of unfunded liability, so our funding policy in place is to target 100% funding over the next 15 years. And so, that payment this year is $139,694, together, that constitutes $262,000 on the police side this year.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
So, the $22,745 on the fire, the explicit administrative expense, so are we basically at a point with the fire pension, given our current situation, and if that doesn't change, where we basically just need to replenish every year of what we spent in the prior year?
Exactly. Yep, if everything keeps kind of going according to expectations, as long as there's no crazy, it's like you hire 20 new firefighters next year, we'd be different, right? But as long as it kind of stays stable, the fund count remains the same covered population, we'd expect it pretty much to be administrative expenses.
Because as you, we had some extra expenses last year, so-
Absolutely, right. So, hopefully, that number will be way down.
Okay, thank you.
Going to page five, it's just going to detail out the demographic changes for fire, so nothing super exciting here, just a couple members. We say if they were terminated to us, doesn't mean all of you got fired, it just means no longer actively a firefighter. So, there's a couple terminations this year. Turning to page six on the police, we saw three new hires during the year, one retirement, we have a couple terminations, and then there was five members who were collecting benefits, continue to collect. Nobody passed away during the year, so that being said. Page seven is going to show you for the police pension fund, these are all the active members within the fund, it's kind of a graphical representation of the makeup of the pension fund in terms of the active membership. And so, you can see down the, you know, vertical there is the ages of all the members, across the horizontal is service. So, we map in the members to say- So we map in the members to say, you know, how old are they and how many years of service do they have. Within each box, you'll see there's two numbers. The number on the left of that little vertical line is your tier-one headcount. So tier-one employees are going to be anyone who first gave a date of service for fire and police prior to January 1st, 2011. And then anyone else is tier-two. And so you can see there, just the breakdown there a little bit. Towards the bottom right, we have that bordered-off section, kind of looks like a boot, and that represents tier-one retirement eligibility. So if anyone fell within that box, it'd mean they'd be eligible to retire at their discretion, right? So when they have mapped age and service criteria to retire, as it stands in looking at this chart, right, nobody's within that boot, if you will, so nobody's retirement-eligible as of census collection date, which is December 31, 2024, for this valuation.
The one is close, though.
Yeah, exactly. You've got one close. Right, exactly. Yep. Page eight is going to show you expected benefit payments and some more demographic info for both funds. Again, no active members in fire, everybody's inactive. On the police side, you've got 12 active police officers, 14 inactives. You can see benefit payments there. Just one small thing to note is that, pretty rare that we see this, projected benefit payments for fire are actually expected to decrease. That was purely because of the additional expenses incurred this past year. So that's not, it'll go away next year. You're not going to, you're going to see pretty stable benefit payments for both. And then on the police side, we'd expect to see benefits increasing as members retire, get cost of living increases, and so on. So in the next 10 years, we'd expect to see about a 66% increase in benefits paid out from fire and police. That really wraps up everything into that one number. That's like expected mortality, retirements, increases in benefits, all those different Page nine is a pretty exhaustive list. Again, still want to bore you guys with all these details, but this is all the assumptions that we've updated. So this is moving from the consolidated boards, IFPIF and IPOPIT, to what we would recommend as Waterbuck and Amon. We updated a lot of actuarial assumptions. It's a pretty exhaustive list. To highlight a couple, for example, the first slide I have there, inflation rate, we have an expectation of 2.5% inflation versus on the fire side, IFPIF is 2.25. So there's a little bit higher expectation of inflation. Individual pay increases is another one to touch on. When we project forward pay increases, it's a really important variable in estimating pension costs because your pension benefits are pay-based, right? So we don't use the one-size-fits-all approach that IFPIF and IPOPIT use. We actually look at your collective bargaining agreement that you have in place. So for example, on the police side, we look at the wage schedule published in that CBA, and then we use that to project forward wages. So there's that bullet, kind of second one up from the bottom, is just describing that process that we do. We always do that process after all of the forward reports. And then again, at the bottom there is expected rate of return, I already touched on this, but 6.75 is our expected rate of funds. What that means is we're expecting the investments that these funds hold to earn 6.75% in investment earnings on an annual basis. All these changes you see listed on this page here in front of you, there was an $18,000 increase for fire, $9,000 increase for police. Page 10, again, getting really in the weeds here, differences in funding policy. So I will spend a minute here because it is pretty important. On a statutory minimum basis, the legal requirement of the city to these pension funds, as produced in those IFPIF and IPOPIT actuarial valuation reports, is to be 90% funded by year 2040. That's current state law for Illinois. We use something a lot more aggressive, better, it's going to situate these pension funds for success in the future. So you'll see there, like, if you look at prior valuation for fire, that's the IFPIF assumption, 17 years, that'll be to get you to 2040, 90% funded based on projected unit credit. What we're recommending for fire this year, knock it down a year, 16-year payoff of unfunded liability, targeting 100% funding instead of 90. Again, you're already at 100%, so it kind of doesn't really have an impact this year. And that's based on entry age normal, just a more stable cost measure for valuing liabilities. On the police side, you'll see the prior valuation is going to be the same as fire, but current valuation for police, we've implemented what's called a 15-year layered amortization. What that means is you'll pay off today's unfunded liability over the next 15 years. Every year, whenever there's a change in unfunded liability, meaning, so for example, if a bad investment year, the fund gets a negative 2% return, instead of having to finance that over a continually shrinking period, the way we do that is we set that up as a new 15-year payment towards, towards that base, right? So every single year, whatever happens, will be paid off in the subsequent 15 years. It's a strong funding policy because, particularly from two perspectives, contribution volatility management, it can be strong in that regard, and also intergenerational taxpayer equity. The idea being that the taxpayers of today, living in the city, should really be financing the cost associated with the benefit accrual for the active firefighters and police officers, rather than passing on this debt to the next generation and the generation after that, and letting it grow with interest and opportunity. So that's a really good policy to implement, particularly on police. Fire's a little bit of a different beast right now, in the sense that there's no active members, and so we just stuck with the single point. On police, we did the layered amortization. Page 11 is showing you the change in asset value for fire and police during the year. So both funds had a pretty good year in terms of investment returns. You can see on the fire side, this year, you started at $3.2 million, the fund ended with an asset value of $3.46 million. Similar story on police, 6.24 was the starting value, 6.85 was the ending value. So you can see growing asset base for both funds. And then to the right there, we disclosed the investment returns. Fire has determined gross of administrative expenses, police is net. Fire return is 10.62%, and police is 8.27%. So again, our expected return is 6.75. You guys keep that expectation just passed through for fire. These calls are risk management comments. Again, actually, the funds are pretty healthy on these metrics. The first thing we look at is the ratio of benefit payments to asset value. So it just tells us, if we take the total pension fund, the assets that are held today, how much of that money is used to pay one year of benefit payments? So for your fire fund, it's 7.27%. Granted, that's kind of high, but the good news here is that you guys are 100% funded today. So you already really have allocated all the dollars you need to pay future benefit payments as of today, so it's really not a huge cost for the company. On the police side, our ratio is 3.63%. So this is really healthy, because what that tells us is that every year, if the fund's paying out, it uses 3.63% of its dollars to pay benefit payments, but then the fund's expected to earn on investments, 6.75, you'll be able to earn more than you're paying out just from investments. Then the city's going to make a contribution, the members are making contributions to the fund, that's funding future members' benefit payments. So that's really the way you want a fund to operate, this really idea. A nice, good number there. At the bottom there's a little sensitivity on expected rate of return, just showing you how the contribution changes pretty dramatically based on a small change in expected rate of return. Again, we settled on the 6.75 for now, tentatively, but if you look at police, for example, you can see how if we use 6.5, that would increase the contribution by almost $43,000, just with that 0.25% change in investment return expectation. And that just goes to show you how important it is that these funds get that expected return, right? You kind of need to see the 6.75 returns on an annual basis to keep these funds stable and healthy. And then just wrapping up on page 13 here, this is the alternative contribution. So this is kind of like a proxy for what IFPIF and IPOPIT will do. The difference is, we still take a little bit more of a customized approach to it. For fire, for example, we're still including that explicit administrative expenses. I'll tell you what, I saw the IFPIF actuarial valuation for this year for fire, and their statutory minimum contribution is literally zero dollars to the fire pension fund. I don't recommend you contribute zero dollars to the fund, because then you won't even be reimbursing the administrative costs incurred last year. So that's why we still come in with the $22,745 for fire. You'll notice the number on the police, this is again calculated on that statutory minimum funding basis, the 90% by 2040. It's a lot less than our recommendations, the $169,781. Still, our recommendation is the $262,000 you saw on the first page that I went over, but that's just to highlight the difference, that $90,000 difference, primarily due to that funding target percentage, 100% under the recommended, instead of 90% under this number, and then the 15-year payoff instead of the 16-year payoff of unfunded liability. So those are kind of the key differences you see on this page. So it was a lot of numbers, I hit you guys really fast. Happy to answer any questions, drill into technicals if anybody has any other information they want to...
Our, our funds are pretty, pretty healthy.
Bottom line is, you're in pretty good shape.
I mean, this has been, a lot of people have been working on this, and we've been putting, adding in every year, you know, I mean, when we, when we make our budgets, you know, for the next year, whatever we got at the end of the year under budget, we, we put it into the funds.
Falls into market.
And that, that has made things healthy, I mean, so it's...
It's a great approach.
Has a lot to do with, you know, people staying within budget, you know, our departments and...
Kevin, I think this was great. Don, I'm curious to know, did this align with what, we had some goals. We knew that there was big change in that pensions last year with the fire department. We hadn't done this in a really long time. Does this align with what you thought we would find, or is there anything in here that caused it, you concerned?
Yeah, we, we really kind of wanted a comparison with the, the state's recommended contribution, and this is a little bit more conservative, so their, their recommendation is a little bit higher contribution than what the state recommends. But the other issue was, because of the fact that we were over 100% funded, yet our payouts in fire pension are way, are significant, as a consequence, we kind of wanted the evaluation to see where, what future funding should be on that scenario with no employees.
Have the pension boards seen this data yet?
They have not. What? It's pretty much hot off the presses, we finished post last week, it's not...
The, the other issue, that they will not issue the final result until the audit is done.
Okay.
And so, so these are drafts.
Great.
Good.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hey, you guys, I'll stick around for a minute, and then if it's all right, I'll just kind of play the excuse myself.
Sure. Thank you.
As much as your run is fast...
Sure, the rest of the meeting would be pretty great.
Yeah.
Run while you can.
Try to keep everybody else in here.
Thank you, guys.
All right, yeah, thank you, Kevin, that was very good. Well, it was good news for... Correspondents, Kevin, we took care of that presentation from Laura Gudding with Sonoski Zito LLP regarding the sale of THC, Delta 8 drinks and consumables from business holding liquor and tobacco license. And I will leave that to Laura.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, back in the fall, some, a potential issue was brought to our attention with the sale of THC, but in the form of Delta 8 and Delta 9 products for sale in the city. And these products are not regulated, they are not, they're not regulated by the FDA, and then they are also, like, the, the product in the child-resistant packaging, they're not regulated either. So what, what we're finding is the public can sometimes think that these are just hemp products, they're not, they're not intoxicating substances. So we dug a little bit into, what is this, Delta 8 THC, and what are the effects on people? So they do have some psychoactive side effects, and there have been some adverse reactions when both adults and children have consumed these products. Usually, it's an accidental consumption that led to an adverse reaction in the adults, and then also in children, they think that they are just normal, normal soda pop or normal chips or candy, but they have this THC Delta 8 content in it. So they are having some adverse effects. With them not being regulated, we looked at, what does it look like for a municipality to regulate that in Illinois, are any doing that? We found that there have been a few home role municipalities that have regulated the sale, created maybe a license requirement or prohibited the sale. And then there's one non-home role municipality that has taken steps to regulate the sale of these products in their, in their town. It's something that South Beloit can consider. There are, I can give more information if that's something that you guys are interested in. I have some pictures of what the, what is being sold in South Beloit, so you can kind of see, these are, we've only seen the drinks in South Beloit, we haven't seen the, the packaged food. It looks like soda pop, it's advertised like soda, but it has, we're finding 10 milligrams of the THC Delta 8 component in it, and that has some intoxicating effects in, in adults, and can have some pretty severe medical complications when children are ingesting these products. So we wanted to bring that to the council's attention and see how the council feels about these products for sale, and if you have...
It's legal to sell this.
It is legal, yes.
I can add, Vayner, so when this first came out in the fall, I think it was at a Wednesday meeting, we had talked to you about it.
Yeah.
And the decision at the time was to put this kind of on our agenda-tracking list, but to not act on it yet, because we were waiting for the state to...
State, yeah.
...make any decisions. And now we've kind of passed that window where, in this particular session, they're not taking any action. So what we were concerned about is, you know, and it's really the first question is, you know, typically, South Beloit is not a trailblazer in coming up with things to, to try to fight the big fight. We don't know if, if challenged, if these would hold up or not, if we did try to influence some local ordinances, but we have a couple of places selling these that are within really close proximity to schools. And so that's what brought up the concern. And now it's kind of like, do we want to try to push this, or do you guys want to wait until, you know, the, the state rises and...
Well, they won't let gaming.
They're not supposed to be.
It, it's not regulated, and so we don't know at this point, the businesses in South Beloit, are they checking IDs, are they, do they have their own age requirement that they are implementing? It's not regulated right now.
But they don't allow gaming next to a school, but they allow, you know, they allow you to sell this stuff, you know?
That's the loophole.
Yeah.
Which says it's not regulated.
It's a manufactured synthetic drug, and this is kind of how they get around it. It's a, unfortunately, a vicious cycle.
Yes. It started with the federal level. In 2018, there was a farm bill that was passed, and it set a, a low threshold of when it was going to start regulating these synthetic, this synthetic Delta 8 THC. So all of this falls below that, so it's not regulated federally, it's not regulated by any of our state statutes, but it does have a psychoactive effect on...
Do we have any reports from the schools? You know, from, well, how they, no, I just wondered.
We have reached out, we have not, there is not a major problem in the schools. They are, they're not seeing this in the schools, they're not seeing...
We've reached out to South Beloit and Hanegha.
Adam, you have anything, what do you guys say about this, chief?
I don't see, you know, I don't think we're dealing with it often, and I think if we did, we, we might not even recognize what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I don't know what we're talking about.
If it's a medical issue, then typically, we would call fire department, and so...
We do deal with it.
Okay.
On and off, yes. Exactly what the product is, is part of the problem. We don't know, they just tell us they've taken something that they've bought at a store, is normally the case. This goes beyond just this Delta 8, Delta 9, there's a lot of Delta stuff out there. Started back with bath salts and those type of things, when those started becoming more available at the counter at these convenience stores and things. You go to some of these convenience stores, they have a lot of products, not just the Delta 8 drinks or 9 stuff, a lot of different products across the board, and people take them, not knowing how they're going to react to them, and we get people that are sick or having an odd high or having a really bad reaction to the drug or to the product, should I say. So this has been, before this product, is something we deal with from time to time, and none of those other products have been regulated yet either. So this is the loophole, there's no regulation on them, so how are we, say it's illegal to sell them, when there's been nothing put forward by the states or the federal government to say that they can't...
Is there any warning on them?
There usually is, usually small fine print somewhere on those, warning, be careful, this is, a lot of them, amazingly enough, even say, not for human consumption.
But I mean, that, hasn't somebody sued somebody after taking this stuff and driving or something? You'd think there'd be something like that, that...
I haven't seen a, like, a reaction that's that kind of reaction yet. It's been mostly just, they don't feel well, they're acting funny, they're concerned about their health because it's not what they expected from the product.
So I can say from, in 2021 and 2022, over about 14 months' time, the National Poison Control Center received 2,362 exposure cases of Delta 8 THC. It was about 50% adults, 41% pediatrics, 40% was unintentional ingestion of this, 70% required a healthcare evaluation. 45% of those patients were pediatric, and one pediatric patient passed away because of their exposure to this.
Seems to me that we got the state of Illinois should be taking care of this and not us. But I mean, that to me, I don't like the idea of them selling it there. But I don't know what we could do to make it, you know, I actually.
Mayor, we just wanted to make sure that we talked about it publicly, because we asked Attorney Goading, you know, at least six months ago, maybe nine months ago, to kind of start tracking it. But I feel like staff has kind of landed in a point where we would like to see more how it works in other places. We know there are a couple of boards in Chicago who have created some ordinance changes for them locally to prohibit either the way that they sell, or the way that their business licenses work, or whatever. But again, I don't think that we're necessarily trailblazers in this topic, especially if our schools don't have a concern yet. I think if our schools come to us and they say, you know what, you asked us that question a couple of months ago, there's been an uptick, maybe it gives our board, you know, reason or cause to try. But we also don't know that it would hold up, you know, if it's challenged. That that legal mess takes time and efforts.
I think we should look at some of the other places that have drawn up something and get some ideas. I don't think we if we wait until the schools say we've got a problem, then maybe too late for somebody.
You know, this is funny, too, because this is something I've never heard about.
Assholes were big when I was still on the department. So this has been going on for a time.
I don't know about them either.
I would say that I have not personally seen in our area of in Platte, Towne Platte. I don't have enough information down here to make an assumption down here. And we haven't seen it in the kids. It's been mostly halfway houses, release homes, places where they're trying to skip a or get away with a drug test by using things that are not based in true drugs, and they're taking large quantities of it, being there, being drug tested. So it's in places where people are trying to circumvent the system by using something that is over the counter. So have not seen a lot of it or noted or been able to track it in the schools or in the.
So I can I can get you how Aniak is the village that has that's the non-home rule municipality that is regulating it right now. It hasn't been challenged yet. Their businesses are adhering to their ordinance. And then with the bath salts, when it was a problem in schools, the schools themselves did a public notice, public meeting to more educate the parents, so that the parents knew what to look for in these products. So that's an option, too, if we feel like this is more just a public announcement level right now.
Yeah, I can't remember, but Attorney Kirk Lucas, who is also a school board president of Hanegha Nation, South Platte High School, he told me that there's something in their, like, student conduct handbook, something or other. But they do have something similar. So we could stay in communication with our schools. We could share resources. But it's just very great, but we've spent a lot of time kind of tracking it. So we at least wanted to, you know, let you guys know that we're tracking it. And if you hear something, if somebody has an opinion, you know, bring it back up, and we'll continue to.
You would think something was going to be in the paper about this. You know, I mean, you would think that if this deal, if they're selling stuff that could affect kids and everything else, and we're they're selling it, you know, 20 feet from the school, there'd be somebody who could.
There were bills that were proposed at the state level. They just didn't make it to the floor for a vote.
And they are being sold here locally, Mayor.
I know.
But to say that there's a problem, there, you know, there probably not yet. But we've just spent a lot of energy and asked Attorney Goading to continue to track. So we thought we at least better provide the update, make everybody aware and.
Well, I think I think it's like we need to keep on top of it, not let it fall on the back burner somewhere, be lost like so many others.
We'll bring a draft if you want us to get creative about how we would propose. We'll bring you some suggestions.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Laura, done. Whatever. Did you say?
Aniak is.
Aniak, okay. Just went through there today. All right. Anybody else got anything on that? Thank you, Laura. All right, we're gonna go down to new business. Discuss approval ordinance 2849, proven the variance and required side yard setback from four four feet, six inches to four feet, three inches, and required front yard setback from 15 feet to down to 6.9 for the property commonly known as 553 Northwestern Avenue, South Platte, Illinois, Winnebago County, pin number 0405306014. Get a motion.
So.
All right, who's got this?
Shauna.
Shauna, all right.
So this is the first variance, the 4.6 to 4.3, that was previously voted on. I believe it was in 2021. The measurement was off. The current owner was constructing two porches, one on the side that affected that 4.6 down to the 4.3, and then also a front porch that was the need for the variance there. Neither one of the neither one of the porches were constructed with a permit that's since been taken care of. It's gone through zoning, and it didn't receive a positive recommendation at the May or the May ZDA meeting, PCC.
This is the one over here putting it on the side of the house?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you okay with it?
Of the.
I see everybody.
It does, you know, it does it does propose the new owner with hardship, because the new owner purchased the home in an as-is state. It was some of the permits had been issued, some of them had not. None of the roughens had been completed. So it's been kind of a mess since the beginning. He is trying to get it wrapped up so that he can get it sold for a the buyer that he originally had was going to be an occupant of the home. That didn't go through because of the process and things like that. So it's in the end, it is going to turn it into a good situation. So yes, I am in favor of this. I just want the permits.
So the new owner comes in, we're not going to go through this again?
That's the hope, yes.
What do you mean, hope?
That's the that's the hope. As long as we can get everything wrapped up, the permits can be signed off on, the building permits and all of that, all of that through Winnebago County. That's the hope.
All right, anybody else on this? Okay, Tracy, please.
Commissioner Heatherton?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes, discuss approval ordinance 2850, approved special use permit to allow for construction of an island structure for electric vehicles charging on commercial traffic, CT zoning district for 16049, Willowbrook Road, South Platte, Illinois. Get a motion, please.
So.
Okay, this is for out there. Quick trip or?
No, this is flying J.
Flying J?
Yeah, they're doing a total remodel. This pertains to the special use here just pertains to.
Oh, that's right.
EV island structure that they're creating. Now, if you remember back when we hit when we discussed the EV charging stations, that does not in itself require a special use. The only reason that it prompted this special use is because it's an actual structure. The applicants have been wonderful to work with. They're in California, so they were not able to be here today. I do believe they're on Zoom. But they are proposing a full revamp of the entire store. They're doing in the process right now of redoing the entire inside. And this is one of the things they propose on the outside is the EV charging station with the canopy to match the rest of the fuel islands. And then after that's done, they plan on reshaping the parking lot. And this did also come with a positive recommendation.
Yeah, she recommended that. Anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Commissioner Heatherton?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes, discuss approval ordinance 2851, approved bulk map amendment to rezone various properties located in South Platte, Illinois, from the RM multifamily residential zoning district, RM to R2A, two-family residential zoning districts, R2A. Motion.
So.
Give a second.
A second.
Who's got this? Shauna.
So this is, as we were going through, we had an applicant that wanted to remodel the interior of the home that she had just purchased. It was a two-family home. And as I was going through all of the permitting with her, it was noted that it was a multifamily, the zoning port was multifamily. That's not what it was being used as. It was that was just the zoning. As I got to looking at that area of Ingersoll, South Park, and South Harrison, it was noted that those properties over there, and we're just talking about the residential properties only, those properties were all zoned multifamily residential. This is something that goes back to the previous ordinances, not with the new zoning map. The new zoning map, it would have been the hopes that 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 stuff would all have been ironed out during that. But some of that stuff just gets overlooked, and this was one of those cases. So it was when I called Eric to discuss, Eric Miller, the attorney, when I called him to discuss, we looked at the entire area, and it was just easier for the city to generate the map amendments for that entire area and do it as a bulk map amendment. So what that means for the property owners over there, if they were to stay multifamily residential, they don't meet any of the zoning requirements. So if anything happens, a flood, a tornado, a fire, anything happens, if they just want to redo their home, they can't because it doesn't conform to any of the zoning districts that it's in. So it was just something better for the city, better for the residents. I spoke with prior to the meeting, I spoke with a number of the residents that live over in those areas. We did have a handful show up to the ZDA. Everybody was pleased. They I think the ones that did show up, I had talked to a few of them. I think they were just a little bit skeptical because they had never had anything like this approach them. So they were they left the meeting happy. They voiced that while they were in the meeting. And this is just going to help them in the end.
Anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Commissioner Heatherton?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes, discuss approval resolution 6623, authorizing expansion of parking lot and expansion of the driveway entrance in 851 Donner Drive, fairgram, I can't read my own reading here, engineering and for proposal for not to exceed $46,550. Motion.
So.
I'll take a stab at the high level, Mayor, and hopefully Brandon can answer any questions at all. This is just bringing back the fact that we have $350,000 budgeted in capital this year to do facility improvements at Donner Drive, Eastern, and Perry, all three of the streets facilities. What you have before you is all of the things that originally were on the list to do at Donner Drive. So it is the the expansion of the parking area, which that's the part that they so desperately need. We thought, let's try to add a floor drain in this bay that doesn't have one, periodically we have to squeak it up the floor. So that's a good chunk of this. Everything under building improvements, line item 10, 11, 12, 13 are all related to putting in a basin that adds up to about $100,000. And then number six on the list of the probable cost is curbing gutter. And so that's another $25,000, give or take. So those are really the items that we need to discuss on what improvements do we want done, not done at Donner Drive. And then, once we have that decision, we place the next couple of items on the pecking order of priorities on the agenda. So then if there's funds available, we can try to get those projects moving as well. Otherwise, I do feel like we're getting to that point in the season where if we don't get on some contractors list, we could load run out of some time to spend that capital. So this is just a hope to try to drill into what we really want done at Donner Drive, so that the rest of the decisions can be made. But Brandon, is there anything about what they're looking at in that proposal? I know that Laura and I talked a lot about this today, but the the fairgram proposal is not to exceed 46 something, 550. If they take the the floor basin and the curbing gutter out of this half, and it's $100,000 left in construction estimate, what does that do to the fee for engineering?
So I don't have the exact dollar amounts, but what I can tell you is the way we structured the conceptual design fee structure was to come up with two different conceptual designs, one with curbing gutter, one without. So if the council elects to not go forward with that, I don't know what that dollar amount would drop to, but I can tell you that it would drop. And then with the design engineering, for the curbing gutter stuff, that's not really going to affect it all that much, but the building improvements absolutely will. Because if we do move forward with a floor drain, we have to pipe that floor drain out of the building and connect it to the sanitary sewer. And so that requires some structural engineering and documents to be created. So if the floor drain was removed from the project, the design engineering portion of that would drop as well. Talking with our team, I think what we would like is, depending on what discussion is today, we could follow up with the revised proposal excluding those fees. Obviously, it's going to be less than the $46,000. So I'm not sure if that would have to come back to the council for formal approval or not. Or just through, you know, invoicing, we could we could probably handle that internally with staff as well. And, you know, obviously, we're not going to charge and charge for something that we're not feeling as far as the design.
I think we're already with $46,000 not to exceed it. We just said if it's anything that we're crossing off, we just, you know, minus it. And seeing we're good business here, we expect you to cross off quite that.
Absolutely.
And then Steve, do you want to talk about these three pieces at all? Your wishes, your?
Well, the parking lots, definitely. We got that one saw spot where they used to have their dumpster. We've tried to put gravel in it, and I think it does need to be bored out over there. I know we've talked about the floor drain. That would mainly be in the winter time where it would be an issue. And the winters we've been having lately, not going to work. We don't have a whole lot of water sitting in there. So if that could be pushed off to next year or something like that, I think it would be okay. Because I do have four or five squeaks there. If it does start to puddle up, we can push it off to the garage door. Because we've I've definitely a lot of left up there.
How do you feel about curbing gutter? There's no other curbing gutter on that vote.
Yeah.
Can I ask you this? So from an engineering perspective, curbing gutter is not required to design a parking lot without it. The only thing I would caution is curbing gutter is required as part of our ordinance. We're reconstructing this parking lot, so that triggers the need to satisfy all of the new zoning requirements for curbing gutter, landscape islands, things like that. You know, I will speak for myself and the staff. When we meet with business owners who want to reconstruct their parking lot, a lot of people tell us that if you're putting if we make them put in curbing gutter, it's going to kill the project. So we get a lot of pushback on that. I'm not exactly sure how residents and businesses would feel. You know, the city would need to formally approve a variance, I would think, or we want to formally approve a variance if we decide to go away from curbing gutter. That's really, you know, up to the council on what you want to do. But I can tell you that I would anticipate some pushback from either some residents or business owners if we have some disdisgruntled people out there that force to put in curbing gutter, and we don't.
If there's if I don't understand, if there's a road that does not have curbing gutter, why would we make anybody put in curbing gutter?
He's not talking about the road. He's talking about the outline and.
Yeah, the perimeter of the parking lot. So so that's just from the from the there's really two purposes. It can act as stormwater collection and drain to actual inlet with storm sewers. We don't absolutely need that. You can design it without. It can be what's called tip out curb to where it's more just aesthetic purpose. And I think that's the intent behind the ordinance, mostly from the zoning perspective, is it's a it's an aesthetic thing. It makes the parking lot look nicer.
And remember, this was discussed last fall, like we that was. And that ordinance was changed, that was amended at that time to if to say that if the improvements were to exceed 50%, they had to follow that ordinance. But if they were under 50%, they did not need to follow the new standards, that they could keep the old footprint and remain curbing gutter free. This project exceeds the 50%. That's. This project exceeds the fifty percent that's the need for...
You sure?
Yes, it's new, completely new. We need a variance.
All right, okay. We can work, we can work variance or something. We'll figure it out. All right, so, in other words, you want... All right, so, go back, Steve. What would you, you said you didn't need the drain this year?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what do you need?
Definitely the blacktop. If we can, if we can improve the variance, I'm good with no curbing gutter.
I think, I think we're gonna run into a problem with that. I know, how much...
How much does a go, curbing gutter cost?
Twenty-five thousand. Yeah, roughly twenty-five, based on our current estimate, roughly twenty-five thousand.
We're gonna be the only ones down there with curbing gutter.
We caught a lot of flack when we built the parking station.
But again, you're thinking street. It's just...
Yeah, I know, it's just around the parking lot. We're not even talking about the street.
Correct.
Yeah. So, Mayor, I agree with you. There's no other parking lots in that corridor down by the treatment plant that have curbing gutter. You guys do, treatment plant does, it's just not paved right now. But, what I can tell you is, the intent behind adding that to the ordinance is, obviously, as you're redoing projects, it's to up the standards, right? So, I think that could be, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, that's gonna be maybe some pushback that you get, is that, you know, hey, why is it different than Gardner or any of the other corridors? Which, realistically, we know it is different, because these corridors get a lot more traffic, but at the same time, you know, that's just, we do anticipate getting some pushback as a staff, but it's not, you know, that's your guys' decision to make.
That's a standard.
We'll absolutely say it's not, it's not needed from a stormwater collection standpoint.
But it's a standard, five-inch curb?
Six-inch curb, that's correct.
Well, I'll jump in now. So, I'm struggling with this one a little bit. I do think, because of the community and the pushback, although we could take the curb away, I don't know that it's good for us to do that. I'm, I'm concerned at the forty-six thousand dollar fairgram, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus right now, estimate on this. I mean, I, I get how projects are bid. We have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar contract amount, we did everything. We've got a ten percent contingency, and we've got about a twenty-three percent engineering, design, and construction. So, I guess, I'm looking at the numbers, and to me, I don't see how, and I get ten percent's contingency, we got the twenty-three percent in engineering design, I don't see how our project goes from two to two-seventy with contingencies in design. So, that's a bigger pro, that's, that's my bigger problem with this, is that, that's not even getting into the weeds with floor drain or anything like that. I just, to me, it just seems like an awful lot to pay before we even get anything going.
We just have to revise the cost estimate, taking that full range...
I'm just, to me, that was the first thing that jumped out. Like I said, forgetting about all the other nuances, I was like, wow, two-hundred became two-seventy. So, I mean, we're, you know, we're pushing thirty percent here, or more than that, I guess. You know, that's what, that's why I'm concerned.
So, I mean, there's options. You know, we built in, obviously, the design is the design, that has to be done. We built in construct, construction observation. If the city thinks that that's something that, you know, staff can handle in-house, that's absolutely something that, you know, the city could handle. We don't need, obviously, for quality, we would like to be out there, and I think it makes sense, but that's something that the city doesn't feel in need. We can obviously talk about, you know, reducing scope and reducing fee. It's not gonna save too much on the construction side, right? Unless you're talking about, yeah, removing floor drains, removing curbing gutter, you know, making some big, big decisions.
Yeah. So, so that was, that's the first thing that jumped out. The floor drain, I don't know, I think it is a sizable chunk of this, which also scares me. You know? But, I'm not saying it's not necessary, 'cause I completely believe Steve, when he says it's necessary, you know, we have the one floor drain in the Perry building, but the trucks that are in the new building, we're not parking at Perry anymore, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. If we already have the drain at Perry, does it really good to expand that drain and do the other bay at Perry? Would that do us any good if we're not on the truck there, since we already have the one bay with a drain in the Perry building?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. 'Cause I would just assume that would be a much cheaper option if you're just cutting from one bay to the next.
What's on the street, what type of bay is that there?
Correct. And the one has, and the one on the right has, has a drain. The one on the left does not.
Yeah, but that's, that's a man might be foot and a half deep. Perry, that was built a long time ago.
Like I said, I'm just trying to...
I don't think we wanna split much money in Perry, do we?
Well, I'm saying it would be a fraction of the cost. If it doesn't fit where our trucks are going, I completely understand that. So, like I said, I'm...
I was the one that brought up the drain, because I figure it's in the building and the floors meet the wall where you can, it rot out if you don't move the water or ice out of there. So, but, it's a point where if we have to wait, you know, one year, and Steve wants to wait, we can do that next year, you know what I mean? It's a...
But then, you run the issue of you gotta tighten the system, and now you're ripping up stuff you just did. Right? Well, I think we can go off the backside of that building, because that's all grass between us and the fucking... So, if we did put the drain in, we could go off that backside and go and not have to go down yet.
I believe that there's storm sewer behind the Donner Drive building right now, currently. So, there's, there's storm sewer in Donner Drive out front, but I believe that there's either a sewer lateral, or there's, something on GIS I thought had said that there was sewer behind the building as well. I would have to...
There's sewer, there's...
But, we have options, other options.
'Cause that, 'cause then, then in my opinion, it does become a viable option to push it, but if, if you were gonna have to deal with having it all the way to the front street, that's a big problem.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I, I think what we would do, if, if we decided to go forward with this, we would design that, I think, to actually stay outside of the pavement limits, 'cause we're not going all the way to the side property line with the parking lot. We have to stay away, there's, I believe, there's a charter as well there. We're going to that point, but there is some room up until the side lot line that we could explore as well.
Well, we're just talking right now, we're just talking about the, the engineering part of it.
Well, it's, it's everything, I mean, you know...
Well, it's, it's, we're just talking about the design and engineering not to exceed forty-six thousand five hundred fifty dollars, and then we're...
You mean as far as what's on the agenda?
Yeah, right. And then, if we okay that, then you decide on what you wanna get done, because then you just back off the cost of the forty-six thousand.
I would feel more comfortable seeing a potential back down bid before I vote on it.
Oh, yeah, but, I mean, we're talking about not to exceed.
I understand. Like I said, I feel like we've got a lot, between that and the contingency, there's just, I don't know, like I said...
So, is it asked to remove the drain for now, and leave the curbing gutter, or are we saying to maybe ask, I just...
I'm only, I'm only one of four sitting up here, so...
No, no, I just wanna understand your ask, but they can't give us a more accurate engineering estimate without us signing up what they want?
You can get, you can get the parking lot with curbing gutter and without. I mean, it's an engineering thing.
Just remove the floor drain?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Move the, remove the floor drain.
And we can, we can stick, stick with the concept phase, we can develop two concepts, two cost estimates for, you know, the two different options, and see what the city would like to proceed with before we do the real engineering.
Right. We have, we ensure what we wanna do, and when you get the cost in there, and then that's, that's when it's gonna come down.
So, can you express your thoughts on curb? What are your thoughts on, on project, Mayor? I'll just ask you and Brian both to jump in.
I don't know, I think we probably have to do it, but I don't want to, you know, I mean, I don't wanna put curb in there when it's down there and it's had, it's no benefit to it. You know, I mean, it's, common sense says don't, but I don't...
But, you know, the community thing, and that's, you know, and like I said, it's, if the bowling alley suddenly ripped up their entire parking lot, we'd be making them put curbing gutter in, right? When they're on our street.
No, look at me.
I'm just saying, that's what's written. I'm saying, that's what's written.
I know, I, I agree, and I said that. I said I would...
We can bring back both, Mayor, on that, and we can send it to the PCC for recommendation when they assign.
Send them down there.
Brian, you got any thoughts? You wanna interject?
Need to do curbing gutter, just like it's rolled up. You'd make everybody else do it.
Remove the floor drain, leave the curbing gutter?
Yeah, what are your thoughts on the floor drain? You like the floor drain?
Remove it.
All right, there you go. But now, you're gonna, what are we gonna vote on here?
I would like to table vote on the side. Is that the easiest way to handle the tracing?
Well, they're not gonna, they're not gonna give us an estimate unless we pay them.
Well, I mean, we can, we can revise our proposal as if the curbing gutter is getting eliminated and the floor drain is getting eliminated, or ju, so just, just the floor. Okay. So, we can revise our proposal for that. I just wanna talk about timelines, right? So, we would potentially bring this back for the next meeting, that is June sixteenth start, I think. Let me see if our schedule was in here. I believe that's probably gonna be a minimum of a month for design, probably roughly that, three or four weeks. Yes, three or four weeks. So, now, we're looking at mid-July until design is done. Then, you have to advertise project for bidding. You're talking, bidding and contracts is another month, so you're now into middle of August.
On September first.
So, you know, we're talking about September, construction, probably leading into October with tight timelines, if possible. It's just, you know, understanding that bidders may come back with high pricing, and we're not, you know, we don't have, obviously, an exact gauge on things. It can be done, but it's just a tight, tight window.
Is there a thought or opinion, this is gonna be a blacktop parking lot, correct?
Correct.
And we're going extra thick because of the trucks?
No, we're just following our ordinance minimum, which is gonna be four inches of pavement.
But is that going to cause us an issue in the future if, because we're driving heavy trucks over it, kinda like with what happens in front of Gardner Storm Sewers?
No. I, I don't anticipate that, how with four inches. Historically, we've done three inches. Four inches is a, it's an asphalt binder course underneath, two and two-quarters inches, and then an inch and three-quarters of surface. That will be, I mean, Steve's not gonna be running loaded semis on that, I would assume, not often, I should say. So, that four-inch pavement section with twelve inches of aggregate should be plenty to accommodate the traffic that's expected.
But we're, we're only talking about not to exceed the engineering, design and engineering not to exceed. So, no matter what we tell you to do, you can't exceed forty-five thousand. So, if you come back at twenty-eight thousand, then, that's, that's what, we're, we're, we're not talking about anything else here, only not to exceed forty-eight thousand five hundred fifty dollars. But we don't, that doesn't mean we're gonna pay you, because that's not gonna be the final price. You know, we're just saying you can't exceed it.
Correct.
There you go.
Yeah, face on the direction, we'll get a revised proposal and bring it back to the, to the council.
Right, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You can vote on it, so it's not exceed?
Otherwise, we're gonna, otherwise, we're gonna delay it another two weeks. I mean, not exceed, he comes back with, without the floor drain in there, and says it's gonna cost thirty-one thousand, whatever, okay? Then, we're all, we're all right, we're ready to roll. All right? I don't see any problems.
Are you, are you coming to vote on this?
Yeah, I want to, not to exceed, yeah. We're not, we're not adding or subtracting anything with this, this motion here, or with this resolution. We're not adding or subtracting to it. We're just reading it, and we're gonna vote on it, because it says, is whether not to exceed forty-five thousand or forty-six thousand five hundred fifty dollars, that doesn't mean that's the price. It just says it's not to exceed it.
But that's not how it's written on our agenda, it just says discussion...
Well, yeah, well, I read it that way. That's the way it was at, when we started. When we started, I brought it up there, and I read that into our agenda. And we, we approved the agenda when we started, and that was, oh, we wrote that way.
So, we can either make a motion to approve it, not to exceed, or we can wait, bring it back on the sixteenth with a revised number?
Well, it's...
The, the motion has been made.
A motion, we got a motion made.
We have a motion for not to exceed forty-six thousand five hundred fifty.
Yeah, bring it up for a vote. All right, Tracy.
Commissioner Harrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
No.
Commissioner Edelman? Mayor Pitts?
Yes. Okay, that passes. We're just not exceeding them, and we're not, that ain't the final price anyway. That's, we're just saying they can't exceed it. All right. Discuss approve masonry repairs to six-twenty-four Eastern Avenue from Abbey Roads at a cost of not to exceed seventeen thousand two hundred dollars. Motion, please.
So moved.
Saied.
All right.
So, with the removal of the floor drain, there should be money to, left in our three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to do both of these two buildings, the tuck pointing and repairs with the Abbey Road. We were only able to get one other estimate for that work, Mayor. That was for a company called Mike Harris. I think they're suburb of Chicago, the only other person in the world that named anyone that name. Their, their bids were astronomical in comparison to Abbey Roads. Abbey Roads did note that they will be paying prevailing wage for this job, so the bids are legitimate, by far the lowest bids in the packet. And the fence, we only got one bid for the, oh, sorry, we're not on, I haven't...
We're not on that one yet. All right, that's, we're, we're talking about it, we're talking about...
Right now, it's just, just...
Just not to exceed seventeen thousand two hundred dollars on the repairs.
So, so basically, let me just jump in. So, I mean, I know what we're, the motion is, so I will only discuss Eastern, but as she alluded to, Perry is next. It's just a different motion. So, you know, yes, what I, what I asked for in the budget this year was money to work on buildings, because we have not touched these buildings for a while. So, the Eastern Avenue building, as she had said, it has to do with tuck pointing. We also, you know, tuck pointing is what this is involving. We also, for anybody that's driven by, oh, wait, no, the Eastern building, this is for, yeah, I'm gonna shut up, I'm talking about Perry.
All right, we're talking about the Eastern building. All right, we get a motion, we did?
Yep.
Yep, and we got a second, and now we gotta vote. Tracy, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman? Commissioner Harrington?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes. Discuss approve masonry repairs on two-two-five Perry Avenue from Abbey Roads at a cost not to exceed eight thousand seven hundred dollars. Motion, please.
So moved.
Saied?
So, Perry Avenue, again, this is just...
Who got a second?
Sorry.
I did.
Oh, okay, Kenny did, sorry.
So, this is just regarding the masonry repairs for Perry Avenue. We've also, Steve's looking at some stuff at the roof. We're also, anybody that's driven by Perry, you see the fascia board that's just rotten and stuff. We're trying to button it up. So, you know, if this building is going to be, you know, if we're gonna be continuing to use this building for a while, the building has got great structure. I stopped by it the other day, just to visit events since my first ninety days on the council, since I'd seen it, so I stopped by to kinda look at it again, you know. The building looks a lot better on the inside than the outside. It is a nice building on the inside, but when you look at it from the outside, it does not look good. And we, we need to maintain, it, it's, frankly, it's our duty, we need to be maintaining these buildings better, especially if we plan on keeping them in our usability.
Yep, yeah, you're right, and inside is great. Yep, yeah, you're right, and inside is great. I've walked through there a couple times now, and it's really, it's did a great job on it, Steve. Anybody else on this? Brian? Any? All right, Tracy, please.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes. Discuss approve relocation of fence at six twenty-four Eastern Avenue from Century Fence at a cost not to exceed eight thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
All right, this is, we're going to move the fence over here on Eastern Avenue. We're going to cross the, the road area, it's going to better secure the facility, people can't get into like the back entrance drive of the park, for example, it's going to come across the old road, and it's going to completely secure the facility.
Yeah, that's been open for many years, yeah.
Yep.
Aren't they going to put a path, bike path down through there?
They were at one time.
What?
At one time.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
And this is the company that did the fencing originally, correct? Yeah, this is the company that did the fencing originally. We're going to reuse the giant thirty, whatever foot gate we have, you know, and if you went through the bid, you know, I mean, I was glad to see that they were smart and, you